Good morning. It's Wednesday, November 9th. We're here for our weekly Board of Commissioners meeting at Courthouse Square in the Senator Hearing Room. And if you will join us, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The flags got moved.
Yeah, exactly. Double take.
Yeah, there was more.
Yeah, the elections was all in here tonight, last night.
Was there an election?
Yeah, there was.
Okay, good. I just, I woke up from a dream this morning and I was thinking that there was something like that that happened. So we have a couple of present, we have, nobody signed up for public comment this morning. We have a couple of presentations for us today. First up today is our Economic Development Presentation from SEDCOR for the first quarter. Chad Freeman and Nick Harville, welcome. You want to have a seat over off to the side? Morning, John.
Morning.
Good to see your cheery face this morning.
Thanks again for the opportunity to come and speak a little bit today about economic development and what some of the trends that we're seeing. The short answer, I think, from the SEDCOR perspective as we work to grow jobs continues to be much the same. We see existing companies continuing to grow and highlighting the similarities of what we've seen as we've come out of this recession. I was doing some research in terms of unemployment. We are now at the 50th straight month of reported job growth across our state, and I think we reflect that very closely here in Marion County. We're down to about 5.5 percent unemployment, again, continuing to see that that job growth. One of the pieces, though, that we've seen as a challenge over the last couple of years that we've spoken to you about has been the lack of industrial buildings with a vacancy rate somewhere in the 2% to 3% rate. That's continued to be a challenge as companies have not been able to find the next building they're looking at either moving into or expanding into. But that market, and I think one of the exciting pieces of news that we've realized and really kind of been materialized in the last quarter, is that folks and investors have begun to start building new inventory, building buildings, and adding more places for jobs. One of the key data points that we've discussed and realized is we've got about a half a million square feet of building currently under construction in Marion County alone. That compares with the last three years of which we've seen 10,000 to 20,000 square feet under construction during an entire year. So we've seen tremendous amount of growth both around, and some of that's investment that we've spoken about here before with the Henningson project at Mill Creek Corporate Center Building, approximately 200,000 square foot development project that's going in Donald that'll be about 200,000 square feet, and then other developments across the region. So I think really a great point for not just new jobs current, but many of these projects have rooms for, as kind of an infrastructure, and they're built to hold many more jobs and much more use in terms of as built for businesses. That is, when I think of Henningson and the cold storage, they're built to support the supply chain around food, around agriculture, and we're working with clients who are going to partner with them. In addition to that construction, we do have other projects that are on the way for new development, even trending into next year. So we're continuing to see steady, steady growth there. At SEDCOR, we brought in a new board, and I wanted to thank Marion County. I think John Latimer's joined us as a new board member to help us guide our efforts. But we've got special, also brought in three new board members who specialize in lead manufacturing firms to help us, manufacturing and agriculture, to help guide our efforts to continue to make sure we're coordinating directly with the private sector. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Nick to talk a little bit about some of the work that he's been doing here in Marion County as well.
Good morning, Commissioners. I wanted to start off by telling you about what's going on with some of the school districts. Yesterday morning at breakfast, you heard me talk about the house building state, which the kids participated on Friday, pouring the foundation. The Canyon School District, Mr. Miller up there, Mount Angel, Troy Stoops' superintendent, and Mount Angel and Woodburn with Chuck have all made major steps to start vocational training again within the school districts, which is great. As you heard yesterday morning, one of our food processors had to shut down part of their processing line because they couldn't find enough people to work in the line and shift it to one of their other plants. So trying to create a pipeline of employees with the right kind of skill sets is very important and critical to us for retention and expansion of the businesses in Marion County. The Donald facility, as Chad mentioned, there's a lot of activity going around the north end of Marion County. We've got two expansion projects at the Aurora Airport. I met with another ag producer last week who's going to do a major expansion this summer and had some other things that they needed to get taken care of, which we're helping them with. They're an egg producer. There are buildings going up in Hubbard on nine acres along Highway 99. There are two other projects outside of Donald's urban growth boundary, and tomorrow afternoon I have a client that I'm meeting in Donald to look at the other three parcels in the industrial park that are left after the Wilco hazelnut growers of Oregon project. You've all been invited to the groundbreaking on November 17th at 11 o'clock in Donald. I hope to see some of you there. This is a pretty major step for the hazelnut growers and for Wilco. It's a substantial investment. It's going to be one of Marion County and the Willamette Valley's major crops in the future for years to come. In the southern part of the county, we've got a couple of companies that want to expand and move their businesses. That includes Woodburn and Jefferson. So I'm helping them trying to locate a piece of property that's conducive to what they need. Some companies are specifically looking for rail, and that's a rare commodity in the county with no service to state, and that limits to about four pieces of property. There are growth projects in Woodburn as well with existing companies, and I'm sure that now that Measure 97 is behind us, things are going to get even better. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Do you, do you have any questions, Commissioner? So I know this is probably outside of Marion County. We talked about this, you talked about this yesterday at the breakfast, the new technology that--
MDD.
Yeah, that Ferris Lumber has come up with. Will they need rail for that because it's a bigger piece? Have you talked to them about that?
They have rail. Their served lines is served by a different rail system, a different short line that comes out of Albany.
It's on the other side of the river?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So they've continued to ship by rail for years.
Okay.
Actually, the tracks go right into one of their warehouses. And, yeah.
So what do you see as the challenges that we're facing right now with all the growth, besides the labor pool? I mean, we hear that everywhere. How about the ability to get things built? Contractors, shortages, have you heard anything there other than labor?
There's a long, long lead time to get contractors, especially commercial contractors. I can give you a bid in maybe December, but it'd be next June before I could ever get to it, kind of thing.
Okay. And I think building on that, you know, kind of systemically, so we've got the, it really comes down to timeframe because we don't have, we're starting to run into a shortage of buildings. We've talked about quite a bit, and I would love to have a full inventory of existing buildings that were here. We had a client in town yesterday, an international client, who needed a 50,000 to 100,000 square foot industrial building. It could be pretty relatively vanilla because they were going to refurbish it, and we were left with really two facilities that kind of fit, but were on the small side. It would be great to have that inventory when we're looking at new investment, and then the time to build some of that because of lead times, and then eventually I think we are going to have some constraints upon land, and we're talking about some of these smaller communities. Donald, this project in Donald will absorb most of the rest of the industrial land in Donald, and that will lead to some sort of investment in infrastructure as well that we're going to be, I know that many of our communities are going to need to look at.
Many of the communities, that's definitely a limiting factor because many of our communities, we have to be very careful about what we, what companies we can introduce into certain communities because of a lack of sewer system or a lack of water, a lack of electricity, or the gas lines aren't big enough, especially sewer and water. With the aging infrastructure, some of the communities just can't handle the added pressure of effluent water, for example.
So Henningson in the Mill Creek Industrial, right? Mill Creek, I think that's right. That's great news that they've, they're moving the dirt and building over there. Did they bring in their own construction company to make that happen so quickly?
They did. They brought in a construction company. I think for them, they've done, you know, even here, just in our region, this is, represents about $60 million of investment, and they've worked with this construction company, at least as a general, on many different projects, and it's a specialist, a company that specializes really in their industry. So they've got a longstanding relationship. That being said, I know they've used a tremendous amount of local contractors. I mean, just K&amp;E was doing the groundwork and ground prep in terms of bringing that up.
Northside Electric, there's River Bend.
All right. Good. Seem K&amp;E everywhere, seems like.
They're busy.
On the freeway and town, so. Anything else?
No, just a great report. I appreciate all the work you do.
Yeah, it's good news.
It is. Thank you, Hudson. Thanks for your support of economic development.
I know, I, one more thing that I want you to be aware of that I just came up, it's been coming up, boiling up, but this Donald issue is the North Marion County traffic safety issue and the pushback on the development and construction. We need to make sure that SEDCOR is at the table when we're talking about these traffic issues, and I'll keep you looped in on some of the emails that we're getting and formulating these meetings up front.
Great. Thank you.
John.
Are there, there used to be federal and state grants for community infrastructure. Has that all gone away? A lot of it has, John. There's still money out there. For example, USDA has their community development side of rural development, and that money's available, but there's constraints and restrictions on that money. You almost got to be unbankable to get into that money. But there are other groups that are stepping up. There's an investment firm in Lake Oswego that actually works with small communities and will come in and look at where they are, where they need to be, and actually help them go for bonds and act as their consultant, and then finance some of the bonds.
And I think to add on just a little bit of, I know Sarah Caballos here in Tamara been working on a presentation, a symposium in early spring, and they're to help local communities connect with some of those resources. So I think they'll cover that in terms of how a city can go about, at least exploring the financing for that type of things, and it will probably be a mix of grant and loan and--
I know they're community development block grant monies, but they're really hard to deal with. They make it very difficult.
Yeah, part of the challenges that we've been finding out as we've been exploring this, like you go up into Canyon and some of the debt load that they already have on some of their systems and the income levels, being able to show that you can pay for the system over a period of time, it's a challenge, but our staff is doing a great job, Sarah and Tamara, and really Commissioner Carlson and I were back, what, two years ago, met with USDA, and it seems like the regional approach is the best way to try to fund some of these things, and that's what we're working on in the Canyon. And maybe we take a look at some of the issues that, because where are we going to have, we've had this discussion at SEDCOR, I know as a board member, where is the next place we're going to be able to have industrial lands for manufacturing? With this park that we're, you know, Henningson's going into, that's going to be in a matter of years probably full, and Woodburn, it's going, moving quick, and then after that, where do we go? So those would be some of the discussions, and then where's it going to go from a land use issue, and what's the infrastructure we're going to have to invest in, and how are we going to do it? Really glad that we could be partners in working with Marion County and our staff and SEDCOR and the state and the feds to make some of those things happen, and the COG.
Yeah, the COG's been a valuable piece in that, too.
Right, good. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks. Good question, John. All right, our next presentation is again about economic development. Allison McKenzie from Grow EDC is here. Welcome, Allison.
I always love hearing what SEDCOR is up to. We're the opposite side of what SEDCOR is doing. At Grow EDC, we're working with communities in a particular region, from Almsville and Syo to Marion Forks, and most of our clients are, our individual clients who work with us are in non-traded sectors. They're hospitality, services, retail wholesale, those businesses that give our small towns their character. They might be restaurants or lodging facilities, or a PR firm, or web designer, that kind of thing. So looking at the report that we did for July, August, and September, I'm going to start first with just with the statistical piece of it and then go into some of the stories of what have been going on. On an individual client basis, we worked with 61 clients and we had 187 individual appointments with people. That's a little unusual in the summer months because they tend to be on the quiet side, but we're pleased with that. We only had two very small workshops. We had a dozen people attending those, and we hosted a very small gathering with the local tourism network group at Plusso Winery in July just to keep some momentum going. And there were 10 people that came to that one, six of whom had never been there before. So then that was just a little tiny taste of what can be done if we want to go out on weekends to different parts of our communities. We have a lot of people involved in our tourism action teams, as you know. We have three projects going. I'll talk about that in just a minute. Even though many of our people are so involved in tourism in their own businesses over the summer, we did hold four planning meetings during this period. 23 different people attended. Our attendance was 31. We do a lot of our work by email in between meetings, so it's really hard to capture what the level of participation is, and you can see that we had a lot of client contact hours. So we're expecting that the tourism initiative that started, that came out of the Economic Vitality Summit a couple of years ago will continue. Since we've started working with Travel Oregon last spring, we have three projects going, and I wanted to update you on what those are. And the purpose of this is to build a compelling outdoor product and brand and build relationships between tourism businesses and attractions, and while we're creating high-value, authentic experiences for visitors here. And one of the reasons we're focusing on tourism is that it's one of the top three industries in Oregon. I mean, it's something that we have a lot of people, we have a lot of people who are interested, and we have a lot of assets, and we have about 1.8 million cars who drive through our area every year. So the first group that is working is building a regional tourism marketing strategy that will help bring people to the area. This group is just finishing up their asset inventory of all the tourism assets, and this has to go right down to GPS locations for trailheads. It's really pretty complicated, and I'm proud of this group for sticking with this part. This isn't the fun part, this isn't the fun part of marketing. This is the stuff that you have to do so you know what you can push out to Travel Salem and then up to Travel Oregon. And this team actually is meeting this week to finish the asset inventory, and next we'll be looking at getting images to populate that. A second group is working on building a local tourism network. Their next networking event will probably be focused on the eclipse. We still need to decide that as a group, and I'm guessing that will be happening. There are a lot of, there's been a lot of publicity about the eclipse, which is on August 21st, a Monday in 2017, and there are a lot of activities planned for the weekend right before the eclipse. But there's still a number of businesses and organizations who don't quite have it on their radar yet, so we're working to coordinate that. And the regional marketing strategy group needs to have all that information together by February so that it can start being marketed out to the rest of the world. So that gives us a deadline to shoot for, and they just made that decision a couple of weeks ago about when they needed to have that investment. And then the third group is working on creating an annual River Festival, and this was something that was really popular during the Rural Tourism Studios, to create an event that would become an annual event that would tie our communities together throughout the region, celebrating water and land activities and creating this regional approach to celebration. And this group is planning to launch River Fusion 22 on the eclipse weekend. And one of the tricky parts is because this is on the eclipse weekend, we have to explain the difference between the events that will be entertaining the visitors who are here over the weekend, or even earlier, and the actual viewing parties on the day of the eclipse. So it's a little bit of educating going on, and you'll see, I imagine we'll see more of that either initiated by us or with us, the chambers in Travel Salem. There's a really, there was a group of about 47 people who got together to talk about the eclipse in September, and for some people, that was the first time they'd really heard about it. So even, I know you're all aware of this, but a lot of people still aren't. We're pretty excited about that. Lodging, as you know, is at a high premium. That's what's going on in the tourism side of things. On the youth engagement and workforce development, there are two projects that we're working on. One is a pilot project that we're doing with, in partnership with OSU Extension, in the Sandy Am Canyon School District. And we've been looking for a while to find something that we can do that will involve our young professionals and have an impact on our local high school students and help teach them some of these essential skills that they need to be successful in their professional lives. So we're still working on the curriculum, and OSU Extension is going to be the lead on this one. And we've had a couple of conversations about what this will look like, but right now it looks like it will be in a class of, two classes of freshmen that will cover all the freshmen in the Mill City School. We're really excited about that because we, a lot of the kids in our area haven't had much of an opportunity to engage with business people outside somebody they might know personally. They don't know about the young professionals and the opportunities that they've created for themselves, or the positions they might hold in civic leadership and that kind of thing. So we're really excited about launching this, and the purpose of it is to see if this has traction, if this is something we can carry out to other places or continue in some fashion. And then the second project is our fiscal sponsorship of the United Way Grant for the Almsville Education Collaborative. This is a summer reading program that started six or eight years ago with just a handful of kids, and this summer they served 318 different children. They had an average of 180 kids on their Monday program during the summer, and usually about 50 parents were also involved. Two-thirds of the kids were under the age of seven, which is wonderful. And then the August Academy had 150 kids this year go through it. This was something that happened in August that was to help kids prepare for excellence in the elementary school when they went through. And now the after-school program has, is launching actually this month and will continue for the rest of the school year. And a lot of people don't realize that this after-school program is run not only by volunteers in the community, but also by volunteer teachers. So there's a lot of attention being paid to how can this early exposure to reading and literacy, that's the basis of the summer camp. It's fun, there's recreation and there's art, but a big piece of it is getting a book to take home and reading and those kinds of things. If you've been involved in the United Way campaign at all, you know that that program, and Commissioner Cameron, you were one of the stars of that video, is the video that they're using to describe how to work collaboratively in a community to make a positive difference. So right now, United Way is looking at extending that contract and using some other metrics to see what a difference this is making in their grade reading. And we won't know whether that will happen or not until the board makes that decision after the first of the year, but we'd love to see that happen. Very excited about this program. We already, the value chain methodology for natural resources industry, let's like to take this one off of our list. The project that Ferris is working on is beautiful for our area. It's very exciting, and lots of people, it's really created a feeling of optimism because it's not just doing what we've always done, it's creating a new product in our area that people can get really excited about, and it's also environmentally friendly, which a lot of people really feel strongly about. There are a couple of other things that we have done. We have a class that we do once a month called Small Steps to Big Results, and we're testing the last two months of the year whether or not we want to also offer that virtually. So we've only opened this up to a few people, and we're not widely marketing this to see how it works in my schedule to do this on the first Tuesday of the month, and how it also works for people, especially helpful for working moms, especially in those communities that have late starts on Mondays. So we've had a few people participate in that so far. So far, from my standpoint, it's an effective use of my time. It's an hour shorter than our other class, but the in-person class tends to be most popular. And the people who come to that class are often people who work alone, they don't have an office to go to, they're entrepreneurs often working by themselves, they don't really get a time to work on their business, they're just working in it. So this gives them a collaborative, a supportive, fun environment to learn. And there were two other things that happened in this quarter that were important, really important for our area. One was the visit that Representative Kurt Schrader made with county commissioners up to our area to talk about Detroit Lake water levels, working with the Army Corps of Engineers and talking about what can be done to keep the lake level higher, and that was a very large meeting at Gates, the culmination of that day. I think there were 165 people there, hearing from the Army Corps of Engineers about what the possibilities might be. And I know you know well of this, but in case somebody's watching this right now, there's a meeting tonight at Trexler Farm from 5:30 to 7:00 to discuss the feasibility study that they, the wastewater feasibility study that the county has been working on, and also the health assessment that the county's been working on. And we know that the data that is being gathered by that, by Danielle Gonzalez and the team from the county is really important, not only for these projects, regional wastewater system and those kinds of things, but also for other grants that they might want to apply for in those communities. So very exciting that we're going to be having that. And then lastly, Chariots has been really rustling with what to do with their transportation system, and their plan up until October was to eliminate all of the bus service between Gates and Stateon and to increase the service between Stateon and Salem, Stateon, Almsville and Salem. And there was a meeting in September where a number of people came down from the upper canyon communities to speak very eloquently about what it means to have transportation there, and there had been, there were five, I think, Chariots board members at that meeting, so they really heard firsthand why that transportation connection is so important to these folks. And by the time the meeting in Mill City happened on October 13th, they'd already decided they would keep two runs a day. So we consider that really important and are grateful that Chariots Board really listened to what happened, and their staff got to work and tried to figure out something different. Those are the highlights from the summer. It's usually on the quiet side, it was a little bit on the quiet side, but as you can see, you know, we're still rolling.
Okay. Any questions?
No, not really. Lots of great information.
And I will see you there tonight. I will be there.
I will see you at EDAB. I will see you tonight.
Okay. Thanks, Allison.
Thank you.
Well, before we go on to our next order of business, it's not really a presentation, but I wanted to take a moment to share this Friday is Veterans Day, and I know yesterday was a big day because we had an election, but I think one of the most important things in our country and the reason we had that election and the freedom that we have is because of the veterans. And so Friday, November 11th is Veterans Day, and on this day, we pay a tribute to all American veterans, both those that are still with us and those that have passed on and served our country honorably during war and peacetime. There's a quote by Abraham Lincoln that I wanted to share, "Honor to the soldier and sailor everywhere who bravely bears his country's cause." And there are approximately 23.2 million veterans in the United States, and I'm not sure how we, fittingly today, can say thank you to those people for what happened yesterday that we can freely go to the polls and have a democracy that, representative democracy that we're honored to be a part of. But I just want to say thank you. Thank you for your service to our country. Thank you for protecting our freedoms, and thank you for risking your life and putting your families aside for those of you that-- your families aside. For those of you that are here today with us that have done that, thank you. And those that are watching, thank you. It's an, it's an honor to, to serve in our positions, knowing that those people came before us to, to allow us to do that. So make sure we say thank you to those who are serving us this Friday on November 11th for Veterans Day. Comments?
Well, great comments. We have been working on the issue of homeless veterans of the Mid Willamette Homeless Initiative Task Force, and had a wonderful meeting a few months back with people from the Oregon Department of Veterans Affairs, people who have served as veterans, people from the veterans organizations like BFW, and really got to hear some of the plight of people who are, who have served their country and then come home and find themselves in a, in a hard situation. But also, I just wanted to acknowledge that we have a number of people who work for Marion County who serve as veterans, and particularly honored to have them be part of our team here at Marion County. So I wanna make a special note to honor our veterans generally, and especially honor our veterans here that work at Marion County.
Yeah. Thank you very much. So, okay. We will go on to our consent calendar.
All right, Mr. Chair, there are three items today on the consent calendar. The first one is under Health, and I would move those items. The first one's under Health. Approve Amendment Number Three to a Contract for Services with Healthcare Services LLC to add $30,000 in funding and extend the contract through November 30th, 2017, for temporary healthcare personnel. Under Public Works, receive the hearing's officer's decision denying conditional use, 16-014 Clopfinstein, Clerk's File Number 5716. And under Sheriff's Office, approve the grant agreement from the Department of Justice, I'm assuming that's the Oregon Department of Justice, State Criminal Alien Assistance Program for $102,032 to provide correctional officer salary assistance.
And I'll second the motion to approve the consent calendar. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. That concludes our formal business for the day. Anything you wanna share? I know you've got, you've had a lot going on. I've been sitting in part of those meetings.
You wanna read the calendar first, and then, do you have a calendar?
Yeah, I've got one here.
There we go.
Yeah, thanks for reminding me what I'm supposed to do.
Well, Sam's not here, so I got a fill-in.
Yeah, fill-in. So today at 10 o'clock, we have the Mid Willamette Homeless Initiative Public Safety Committee, location here in the Courthouse Square, in the Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor. Also today at 2 o'clock, Mid Willamette Homeless Initiative Support Services Education Subcommittee. Also, location here is in the Salem Conference Room on the first floor, right behind us. Today, at 5:30, the City of Salem Farewell Celebration, location at the Salem Convention Center, 200 Commercial Street, Salem. And today, tomorrow, the 10th of November at 7:30 a.m., we have our Kaiser Marion County Meeting. Location is at Sherry's Restaurant at 4998 River Road North Kaiser. Also tomorrow, Thursday, the 10th, 9:00 a.m., we have a work session for Juvenile Department. Location here in this building, in the Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor. Tomorrow, the 10th, at 12:15, we have a Health Department ribbon cutting at our newly renovated, remodeled Health Department at 3180 Center Street Northeast. Hopefully, some of the public can join us and, and take a tour of that. And tomorrow, excuse me, and Friday, the 11th, at 8:00 a.m., the offices are closed in honor of Veterans Day that we just talked about. And on Monday, the 14th, at 8:30 a.m., we will be upstairs in the Silverton Conference Room for calendar review. Monday at 9:00 a.m. the 14th, we'll have management update upstairs in the Silverton Conference Room. And Monday, 11:00 a.m. the 14th, Association of Oregon County's Annual Conference convenes at the Hilton Hotel at 66 East 6th Avenue in Eugene. Monday at noon, a Mid Willamette Homeless Initiative Health and Housing Subcommittee here, no, location will be at the Willamette Valley Community Health on 2965 Ryan Drive. That's at noon on the 14th. And on the 15th, Tuesday, also the Association of Oregon County's Annual Conference at the Hilton Hotel in Eugene. And Wednesday, we will not have a board session because the annual conference continues in Eugene. That is our calendar. So that is the end of our formal business. Thank you.
Well, election, maybe we could talk about that. So what's the skinny on the marijuana measures? So you have them up here.
I just brought them up. There was three measures that we referred, that we had to refer because of the situation. The allowing medical marijuana businesses is very close, 49.9, 49.49 percent in favor, and 50.51 percent saying no.
And what percent of the vote has been counted? Is it?
Hundred percent.
Hundred percent, okay. So that actually failed, then?
Right, by.
By a real small margin.
Small margin. Yeah. And then allowing the recreation marijuana businesses, the growing, the processing, and the retail, the yes vote was 46.9 percent, and the no vote was 53.8, .08.
Bigger margin.
Bigger margin. In fact, a larger margin than Measure 91 back in 2014.
Marion County's portion of the statewide vote, which was about, what, a little, between one and two percent.
Yeah, it was 51, I think, percent then. So that's interesting how the electorate has shifted even further.
Well, I wonder too if it's because now that all the dispensaries are out, and there's so many of them.
People are saying, hey, we got enough out here.
Right, yeah, I just, that was just my thought.
I say that. I go buy probably four dispensaries on the way home. There's more dispensaries than liquor stores.
I know.
Yeah, so.
I was telling my husband, have you seen It's a Wonderful Life, you know, when he goes into the dream and he comes back in his sweet little town, you know? It was kinda, I was driving down North River Road in Kaiser here. The place where I won a turkey when I was in college and we lived in Kaiser, I think it was called Swiss Mist or something like that. It was a little restaurant. It's now a marijuana dispensary.
Okay, times have changed. And then the tax, the 3% tax was overwhelmingly in favor if we did have the retail recreation, 84, no, 76.5 percent and for it, and 23.4 percent.
So if it were allowed, then we'd get some money off of it, but we.
We wouldn't have that many retail establishments anyways.
That's true. Although they're looking at changing the formula in the next legislative session, so.
Yeah, okay. So and then there's a lot of the local cities that had different.
Yeah.
Different ones.
It looks like the tax measures on marijuana passed with significant margins across the board. I didn't see one that failed.
Yeah.
Throughout the county. And there were a lot of them on the ballot. I was surprised how many, when I was looking through the voters, the county voter's pamphlet, which by the way, I am so happy we do that county voter's pamphlet. I think it's a wonderful service to the citizens to have that local information that they can't get out of their state voter's pamphlet.
Yeah, so I think everybody knows what happened statewide, but those were the only local, those are the only things that we had in Marion County, that countywide. So that was, yeah, it was good. I'm glad it's over.
Yep. Well, and there wasn't much of a campaign on either, on any of those three measures. I didn't really see any arguments per recon in the.
I saw some signs last week.
Voters' pamphlet, yeah, just a few signs, and that was about it. So really, it was, it was really a test to see where the voters were at, just without being marketed to.
I just, I just find it amazing now, being, being in here with, serving with you for the last couple of years, how, how this particular position is so about conducting the people's business. I mean, you really get things done. And the other things that, during this election, that people, you know, are all up in arms about, having been there, you've been there too, being like in, in the legislature. I mean, you get, you get some things done, but it's.
It's words on paper.
It is. And somebody else has to implement it, or, and, and so, you know, the, the public is really focused on those things, and yet this is, this is more of an operational level where you're actually doing, doing the work and getting the things done with great staff around us. So I just wanna thank Marion County and the staff that we have, and just making us look good and helping us get the job done. So it's great. And great to have Sam back for another.
Yes.
Four years.
Hope he's catching a few out there.
Yeah. I was teasing him, because last night when I looked early, he had 93 percent, or 90, 97 percent. And I wanted to say, well, how come he had some of those people, he had some write-ins against him. That's what it was, I think, yeah. Okay, I think we're done?
We are.
We will adjourn. Thank you, CCTV as well.